Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners. We'll begin this evening with a moment of prayer, and that will be with led by our Commissioner Hauserman, if you would please, Commissioner.
Father, we thank you for this day, thank you for this commission, thank you for Livingston County, I thank you for Christmas time, and we pray that you would be with us tonight as we consider each item, that you would give us wisdom beyond our experience, and that you would just help us to make the decisions that are best for this county now and into the future. And we just ask your help humbly in all things tonight, for Christ's sake.
Amen. Thank you. This evening, we have a guest, Eric Boland, he is the son of our Health Department Director, and Eric, if you would stand, please, and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the roll call. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Domas.
Here.
Commissioner Helserman.
Here.
Commissioner Sample.
Here.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Dric.
Here.
Commissioner Deaton.
Here.
Commissioner Smith is absent, Commissioner Fiani.
Here.
And Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Chair will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second, Deaton. Been moved and approved and supported to approve the agenda. Are there any comments or questions?
Yes, sir. I'd like to motion to amend the agenda, removing item 12B, numbers one and number two.
Support. Been moved and supported to remove, is that permanently or temporarily, or?
Permanently off tonight's agenda.
Okay. To remove items A and B, 12A and B, from the agenda?
No, I think you meant.
12B, one and two.
One, two.
12B, one and two.
Okay, thank you. 12B, one and two. Are there any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Next item is.
Yeah, now you have to do the whole agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. We need to vote on the amended agenda now. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the call to the public. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone that wishes to address the board?
Mr. Chair, did I miss correspondence? I'm sorry, I was writing. Have we, next on the agenda would have been correspondence, could we, for minute purposes, cover that topic, please?
Chair will entertain. Yeah, we don't have any correspondence.
Correct. Okay, um, I do not have any cards for the call to the public from the board chambers.
Okay.
I don't have any on Zoom, neither.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. There is no.
I didn't.
There's nothing on Zoom.
No, sir.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting dated December the 11th, 2023.
So move Gross.
Second, Fiani.
Moved and supported. Are there any comments or questions about those minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Next item is the tabled items from previous meetings, and there are none. Next item is the, are, is reports. May we have any reports, please?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have one report.
Yes, sir.
I was a guest today at Brighton Schools, at Mopie Intermediate School, for their Teacher of the Year, and this was generated from the Spirit Center, which will do public service awards on the 15th of February, and they will be honoring one teacher, one law enforcement officer, and one firefighter, and they've been inviting us to their local ceremony, and then on the 15th, the American Legion, BFW, and Ambettes will give them a plaque, and it'll be a nice award going out for all of them. So it was a nice event today, and he was surprised, they kept it a secret, so we walked in and all the kids cheered for him, and it was, it was pretty cool, so.
Thank you for representing the board at that.
My pleasure.
You bet. Are there any other reports? The, this will be the last formal meeting of the year. The next meeting, the next time we meet, will be the first business meeting of 2024, and we will be electing a board chairman at that time. So, at this time, I'd like to make it, make the announcement that I, I will not be available to accept any assignments under that, with that title. So, I have enjoyed this, these 12 months more than you know, and so, because I guess you haven't read my report on it, but no, this has been a great experience for me, and, and I think the board has quality people who can. So, anybody else have any reports? I'd like to hear them. Yes, sir.
Um, learning this, I want to just say it's been absolute pleasure serving alongside you, with you leading the home and serving as our board chair, so thank you, thank you for your.
Well, thank you. Anybody else?
I'd like to report the same thing.
Can I throw a ditto in there?
Add my dittos also.
All right. Now, we appreciate it.
Well, I really truly enjoyed it, so, most of it. Sometimes, but thank you so much for that, I appreciate it very much. Are there any other reports? And with that, I'll turn the meeting over to our Vice Chairman, Jay Dric, who will handle item 11, the resolutions for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're at Agenda Item 11A. It reads 2023-12-202. It's a resolution to authorize a fourth quarter budget amendment to the fiscal year 2023 budget, brought to us by Fiscal Services. Hillary's here, if there are any further questions, but we talked about this at length on Monday.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Support Deaton.
Thank you, motion by Fiani, support by Deaton. Any analysis, questions, comments, objections? Seeing none, I'll close that. It's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Dric.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent, motion carries.
Thank you. We're on a 211 sub B, it's number 2023-12-203. It's a resolution authorizing issuance of blanket purchase order for 2024 election supplies, brought to us by the county clerk, may I have a motion?
So move Helserman.
Second, Sample.
Move by Helserman, second by Sample. Any discussion, objection, report, observations? Seeing none, I'll close that portion, and this is a voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight to zero unanimous. We're on to 11C, it's number 2023-12-204. It's a resolution authorizing Marion Number Three Drain Bonds, Series 2024, brought to us by the Drain Commissioner, and Mr. Rikers here, if we have more questions than we might have had Monday. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Support Helserman.
Move by Domas, support by Helserman. Any questions, analysis, objections, comment? Seeing none, I'll close that portion, and this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Dric.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent, Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to 11 sub D, it's 2023-12-205. It's a resolution authorizing our county treasurer to establish Fund 678 Pension Defined Benefit Defined Contribution Benefit Fund. Can I get a motion?
So move Gross.
Support Deaton.
Move by Gross, support by Deaton. Any questions, analysis, objections, comment? Seeing none, I'll close that portion, and this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Dric.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent, and Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to 11 sub E, it's a resolution approving the distribution of American Rescue Plan Act funding to purchase mobile scanners for the Sheriff Department. Can I get a motion?
Move it, please. Second.
Motion by Domas, support by Nakagiri. Any questions?
We need to knock off the S on scanners.
Correct. Madam Clerk, would you make that minor adjustment?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further comment, question? Taunting of the sheriff, anything along those lines? Seeing none, we'll move to roll call vote.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Dric.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent, Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
And Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're now at Agenda Item 11AF, excuse me, 2023-12-207 is the number. It's a resolution approving the filling of the Director of Personal and Preventive Health Services/Deputy Health Officer at the above higher rate, at an above higher rate, brought to us by the Health Department. Can I get a motion?
Motion to move the resolution, Sample.
Support Gross.
Sample by, as Sample moves, support by Gross. Any questions, comment, analysis?
I would just like to make some comments.
Certainly.
I talked with Matt, and this is, I think we're very happy to have a person that's already on our staff to be moving up. I think it speaks well of our Health Department and the leadership there, and the willingness to, to step up into a position that might have a little more firepower coming at them, so, so happy that we can hire, hire from within and, and raise people up.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yeah, this is a little, little bit off topic, but still Health Department, really, I, um, Mr. Boland had sent out an email elaborating on civil infractions. If you read through that email, I just wanted to share with you that I'm fully on board with what he's proposing, and so look forward to the, you know, upcoming year and the modifications therein, so. It doesn't really have anything to do with this, but it had to do with the Health Department, so, thank you.
Any further comment, question, analysis? Seeing none, I'll close that portion and go to a voice vote kindly. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Eight to zeros, how I hear it. We're on to 11G, number 2023-12-208. It's a resolution approving the tentative agreement between the Livingston County Board of Commissioners and the union representing 911 dispatchers, and it's brought to us by Human Services. Move the resolution.
Follow Gross.
Motion by Helserman, support by Gross.
And good evening, commissioners, I'm on Zoom to assist with the presentation, understand Director Williams may also be there as well. So we have reached a tentative agreement with our 911 dispatchers, their agreement expires at the end of this year, so this new agreement would extend from 11/20/24 through 12/31/2026. The agreement has been discussed extensively over the months at Personnel and meets those goals as discussed with that committee. The union has voted to approve this tentative agreement, and so the final agreement is, that's needed is, is your approval. I forwarded the, the materials, wondering if you have any questions, and I'm happy to entertain those, and also recommend and request your approval of this agreement.
Thank you, Jennifer. Commissioners, Commissioner Gross, you're recognized.
Thank you. Director Palmus, I, when we talked about this last week, I had not read everything through at that time, and I've been looking at your, your summary letter that's dated today, and I see on the second page, there's a paragraph there that requires, indicates that the overtime provisions that are, that are in this proposal require federal approval. And I'm just wondering if you can elaborate on that, is that something that's potentially a problem, or it could take significant amount of time, or is it just a mere formality?
I understand it to be a formality, so the federal approval that's required is from the National Labor Relations Board recognizing the union as a certified bargaining agent. Civil Council has assured they'll assist us walking through that process. So because these dispatchers are considered non-first responders, that there is that special approval required to measure overtime periods over an 80-hour period versus the 40-hour work week that's presently in place now. And so, once we have this approval from the Board of Commissioners on the agreement, the next step is, is working with Council. We're forward the form that the union needs to send to the, the federal government, and I expect it to go smoothly. Matt, I've not gone through this process before, but do you expect it to be a formality? Terrific.
Yeah, it's smooth sailing as long as both parties are on board.
Great.
Thank you. Any other questions, comment, analysis? Jennifer, on your memo of the 19th of December, I was pleased to read that there'd be a savings of 10,000 bucks in the first year, but then when I read your memo of the 21st, two days later, that jumped to 26,000. I love that kind of math. If we wait longer, is it gonna keep going up?
The, to be.
Which one might be right?
Yeah, it's, it's closer to 10, and so it's, the savings, I mean, both are true. The savings from going to the 80-hour overtime measurement period is $26,000. However, we are also adding in, or I guess subtracting from those savings, the $500 one-time bonus that's actually would be paid in 2024 and in 2025, so that subtracts from those, really, from those savings in the first two years, but the savings are ongoing from the change of those overtime provisions, and so if overall savings are 26,000, we reduce it by the cost of the bonus, and the other reduction, I believe, was for that, the uniform payment that will be $300 per year going forward. The department has gone to a formal uniform, and they're supplied with the first set of uniforms, but then after that, employees will have to purchase replacements after that.
Thank you. Any other observations you want to make?
Um, no, we're pleased with the agreement, it, it passed well, and it hits the goals that we were looking for. You know, the goals with other bargaining units to change, to change pensions, this group has had a defined contribution pension since about 2003, so that was not a goal on the table, but making changes to this overtime premium pay was.
And it fits in, it fits into our 2024 budget?
Yes. Yes, it's, it is, it is savings.
With that, are you the floor? Any other commissioner wish to comment, question? I'll close that portion then, and I believe this would probably be a roll call. No?
No roll call.
Very good. We're at 11G, all those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight to zero is what I hear, it passes.
Thank you, commissioners, and Merry Christmas.
Good work, Jennifer, thank you.
Merry Christmas.
We're at 11H of the agenda. It's a resolution approving the distribution of American Rescue Plan Act funding for the radio enhancement upgrade project brought to us by the sheriff.
Move it, please.
Thank you, any second.
Support Deaton.
Move by Domas, support by Deaton. Questions, comments? Observations? Commissioner Nakagiri.
I'm sorry. The, I was wondering what the results of the discussion, you know, with happened with that?
Sheriff Murphy, did you want to speak to there, or would you prefer I speak to it? Yeah, I was trying to get on, I was trying to get unmuted there, I apologize. So, first of all, I apologize for not being there in person, I'm doing dual duty. Uh, one of the boards I, other boards I sit on, I'm on another Zoom meeting in another room that my wife's kind of filling in, so otherwise I'd be there in person, I apologize. Um, so we did hold that meeting on, was it Tuesday? Commissioner Fiani?
Yes, it was Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah, Tuesday, and to make a real long story short, they basically said that they would be able to come down another 5%, which I think drove the project from a total of seven, I gotta stick it somewhere.
760 down to.
759 down to 722.
Yeah, basically that represented a 5% discount based on merging the two projects, in other words, our radio purchase along with 911s, and so the resolution that Keisha's got forward, that 2023, 12, 20, uh, 210, if those two are combined, then the number would be 721 as opposed to the 759, but they, you know, I basically said, hey, listen, this is competitive bid, you know, that's the best we can do, we can realize a little bit of economy of scale if you throw, if we make it one project instead of two, and if we get it done by the end of the year, so that's where that's, that's where that stood. I also sent you an email, if you guys get an opportunity, that kind of lays that out, and along with some other stuff, too, because there's more than just this project and the tower project on the table, there's some other projects out there, and I'm not sure that all the commissioners understand how much money's hanging out there, or the potential once everything gets done, so, please, when you get a minute, if you could take an opportunity to look, look that over, so. Did I miss anything?
No, I think, I personally, I think you covered it all. I think it was a very productive meeting with Motorola, I certainly appreciate your attendance and Motorola's participation.
Any further comment, analysis, Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yeah, just continue on. What, what are the, this is for Sheriff Murphy, what are the implications if we didn't approve this tonight and looked at this, you know, in conjunction with, you know, this potential multimillion-dollar tower purchase and looked, and did, I'll say, just package everything together?
Yeah, so that's certainly, certainly an option. I can tell you that the price probably will go up because they're holding this as a 2023 price, and we all know that things grow over time typically. Now, that said, whatever that price increase is, could end up being negated by the fact that it is one larger project. But again, there's, there's other projects out there that should be considered. When this, when this whole thing got started about two years ago, when we knew we were gonna get ARPA money, we were asked by the board and Nathan to, hey, throw, throw whatever you guys need out there. We threw this out there because these radios, if you recall, they are coming to end of life anyways, and then the encryption part of this comes with the capability of that radio to be encrypted, so we don't have to send them back. So if we bought, if we bought radios that were unable to be encrypted today, and then we made that decision down the road to do it, or the state mandated, which at some point, they're gonna mandate it for certain channels, so it's kind of silly not to, not to do it now, right? So we did some dirt math, and we came up with a figure of about 600,000, and for, I think some of you heard that number last time, that was not Motorola's quote, that was just my office throwing a number on paper as, as more of a placeholder for an ARPA project. So when we got closer to this becoming a realization, that's when we actually got some hard numbers, and that's where we're at with the total 721. Now that, again, that's our project plus Keisha's project wrapped up into one. So that was a long way to answer your question, but we are not in, it's not like our radios are gonna die tomorrow, and we won't be able to communicate or, or answer calls for service, so that is certainly an option. However, the longer we wait, I will say this, the longer we wait to do radio replacements, the number is gonna get bigger in the sense that we're gonna need more radios, because we've bought those things over time, the, the, the ones that we're again, looking to do now are, would be the latest and greatest. Some of those radios on our system right now, if one of them goes down tonight, it's no longer serviceable, so it's junk, it's a boat anchor. So, I say that to say our request for, I think it was the 43 portables, and then the 20, I, I don't have the numbers in front of me, I apologize, 20-something car radios, et cetera, et cetera. Those numbers are gonna increase because, just of the replacement schedule of those radios, if that makes sense.
One more question, if I may, Mr. Chair. Any, speculate, if you would, on any likely or possibility that when the state mandates the, you know, use of encrypted radios, that they might provide some joint funding, some subsidy for the end users?
Yeah, you should probably go on the road with a comedy tour with that. When have you ever known the state, when have you ever known the state to mandate something and then fund it? Doesn't happen very often, or if they do, they back away from it pretty quick, so I, I would, I would speculate the chances of that would be about zero. Now, likely what they would do is they would say, hey, as of, you know, 2027, to give people time to, to plan for it, number one, or number two, they'll grandfather everybody and say, any news, any new radios that come on have to be that way, that, that would be my crystal ball prediction, but there's not gonna be any money for it.
Thank you. Sheriff, I read some of your emails, I think at least two, where you have an opinion as to the makeup of a, a potential committee creating RFI and RFPs. Did I read those correctly?
Yeah, so I, I'm not even, I'm not 100% sure we need an RFI, frankly, on any of these projects, because I, I think we have a conversation with MPSCS, and they, they're the ones that are gonna hold the parameters, so, I mean, I, I, I think an RFI, my initial thought was that's a good idea. You know, after having a little bit of time to let this circle around the gray matter, which they're short circles, by the way, but the, I, I don't know that that's I don't know that that's necessary, and it might be, I don't want to say wasting time, but time and energy and effort that maybe we don't have to, because again, from MPSCS. from MPSCS, they will tell us what they will allow on their system. So we can say, we can pretty comfortably build an RFP uh, from there.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross.
I would like to propose an amendment to this resolution to reflect the price reduction of five percent, which would bring the uh, the, from, number from six hundred and eighteen thousand and change down to five hundred and eighty-seven and change.
So, so uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Gross, to interrupt you, but y- you have to understand, the only way we get a five percent reduction is, is, is if we uh, partner this resolution with Keisha's resolution as one project. That was the only way that Motorola was able to shave any more money off. So the two would have to be taken as one.
I thank you, Sheriff Murphy. I'm, I'm perfectly willing to, when we get to Keisha's resolution, to offer the same, same change. I think right now, both resolutions reflect a higher price. I believe they should reflect what we really expect it to be. And Keisha's resolution should be reduced by approximately seven thousand dollars. I haven't checked the pennies.
Commissioner Gross, can you repeat the number for me so I can write it?
Um, rough and dirty on the resolution eleven H, the figure of six hundred and eighteen thousand, one sixty-one point fifty-six should be reduced by, give or take pennies, uh, thirty-one thousand dollars. So that number would drop to five hundred and seventy-seven? Five hundred eighty-seven thousand.
Thank you. Is there a second? Support? It's been a motion by Commissioner Gross and support by Commissioner Domas to alter the six hundred and eighteen thousand dollar price down to approximately five hundred and eighty-seven thousand on eleven H. Discussion? Observations?
If my, my, my question, i- is this, uh, is this necessary? A lot of times we make things and we say not to exceed a certain amount. Uh, and I think if, if this is written that way, I'm happy to, you know, just say with, as opposed to put it a particular number, put the uh, uh, with a negotiation of five percent as opposed to a, a particular number, because you know, I, I don't know, but that's because a lot of things we do with a not to exceed, so I'm, I'm not sure if it's necessary s- step to, to do that, that's all.
Commissioner Deaton, you are next.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, first, thank you, Commissioner Fiani and, and Sheriff and, and Admin for working on this, getting the prices down a little bit more, and helping the taxpayers out a little bit. Um, for items, H and I, I'm for both of them, but uh, we've had bigger discussions on a bigger project, and um, you know, I'll go with the will of the board. I, I, I support both of these, but um, I would like to see them maybe tabled until we can bundle it with maybe the entire project. Um, just from negotiating in the past, it's a little bit better negotiating when we have uh, have all of it. And what I'm hearing is that, you know, there's no life or death situation right now, so that's what I wanted to hear. Um, so I think we're pretty good. So if, you know, if we table these until next year with the bigger project, I would like to see that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I will wait on your table motion until we solve the First Amendment by Commissioner Gross. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Um, with respect to Commissioner Helserman's thoughts, both of these resolutions have specific language regarding the price. There's nothing in there about a not to exceed. So either way, we would need to amend the resolutions to change it. I think just changing the number is a lot easier than adding in the verbiage regarding not to exceed. Uh, also like, well, it's prob, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm out of order with respective
It's okay.
With respect to Commissioner Deaton's suggestion, if we table these, uh, there's a very good chance the pricing will change unfavorably for us. The other thing is, how close are we to make a decision on the big uh, tower project? As I recall, it's like fourteen million dollars. We don't even know where that money's coming from. So it, I would hate to have the people that need this get held up and then have to pay significantly more. It's my comments.
Thank you.
Mister, yeah, Mr. Chair, may I?
On topic, certainly.
Yeah, thank you. So I, I agree with Commissioner Gross and Commissioner Deaton, to your point, y- you're right. This is not going to be uh, life or death i- if we don't get these radios, no question. However, that fourteen-plus million that we were quoted for the towers uh, was a this-year-only price. Um, and then I think the other quote going into next year was sixteen million. So there's another two million bucks in inflation or whatever you want to call it. So I think any with that, with bundling these two, I don't know that we gain any more than we're going to gain right now with this five percent. And then down the road, there's going to be an opportunity. Um, again, I sent an email uh, yesterday that explained some other project. There's about another seven million sitting out there uh, for uh, radios, uh, computers, et cetera, for county-wide public safety, uh, that'll have to be addressed at some point. So there, there is an opportunity to bundle, plus we've got the R, the RMS um, project, the CAD project. I mean, there's an opportunity to bundle some other stuff for what it's worth.
Thank you, Commissioner Fiani.
So uh, I certainly don't have an issue uh, making the amendment to the resolution. Um, I will support that, but for the overall resolution, uh, I will not be voting in favor, only simply because I want to take up uh, Sheriff Murphy's uh, option that he proposed in his email to bundle these in the future. I do like your proposal, Commissioner Deaton, except uh, I would encourage, as opposed to tabling it, um, we vote, if desirable, vote not to approve if we table it. It restricts us to having to come back to this specific resolution in the future, whereas if we vote not to approve it, then we can hit the ground running on bundling this and get something out the door in January in terms of a RFP, similar to what Sheriff Murphy proposed in this.
Sheriff Murphy, are you okay with going through the county procurement par- process with the RFP?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I just um, you know, my crystal ball's been wrong before, but I'm, I'm going to say that you're, you're probably not going to save any money. But yes, I'm okay with that.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close the discussion on Commissioner Gross's uh, numerical amendment. All those in favor of amend?
Mr. Vice Chair, before you take that vote, can I just seek clarification that in both spots in the resolution, in the fourth, or excuse me, the third whereas, and the first therefore be it resolved, the six hundred eighteen thousand, one sixty-one fifty-six will be reduced five percent to five hundred eighty-seven thousand?
Two places.
Both places.
Yeah, both places.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had this amendment correct.
Probably would be appropriate to say approximately five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, because I haven't, I haven't done the precise calculation.
Chairman Domas, are you okay with the friendly amendment inserting the word approximately?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Please make the record.
Okay, to approximately five hundred eighty-seven thousand.
Yes. Now that we're set on the exact language, uh, I think on the amendment, it's a voice vote.
Correct.
All those in favor of Chairman, yeah, excuse me, Commissioner Gross's uh, numerical uh, amendment to the approximate amount, kindly say yes?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That amendment now is passed. We're back to the original resolution.
Vice Chair?
Per, uh, Mr. Attorney, please, go ahead.
I just wanted to be clear, how we will interpret that language is that it cannot be above that dollar amount.
I believe so, yes.
Okay. So as long as we're sure our calculation is a little above uh, the reduction, we're fine. Otherwise, I, I wouldn't have authority. I, approximate can't be more, in my legal opinion.
I think you're correct.
Okay.
It, it may be a, a moot, a moot topic, though, but.
Theoretically. Chairman, I, I meant my proposed amendment. I'll, I'll see it not to exceed five hundred
We're trying to get things done. Go ahead.
Five hundred and eighty-eight thousand.
So we, we may be running into a couple problems, so I'm sorry, Taryn Jack, but um,
Recognize this, Commissioner Fiani.
When our discussions took place with Motorola, they didn't, they specifically said five percent, very specifically, but they did not say how they would arrive to that five percent. They, I don't know if they would deduct a little more from Director Williams' proposal, um, a little more from Sheriff Murphy's proposal. I just wanted to make the board aware of that.
Commissioner Gross.
So when the discussion with Motorola was, was it focused strictly on the old amount, which would have been seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand and change?
Yes.
So five percent of seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand is composed of two pieces, so I, I, I would believe that they would honor five percent on each part of the package.
They, they're, they're not bidding it that way, though. They bid it as one project for, for the five percent. That's the reason they were able to come down the additional five percent.
Well, in that case, maybe what we should do is take both resolutions and combine them into one and talk about the total package instead of focusing resolutions on each part.
Do you want to abandon your motion to change the five eighty-seven to five eighty-eight? So we proceed on with your other thoughts?
Yes, I abandon that.
Okay, we're back to five eight seven zero 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 as the number. And we have already voted on that.
If I may, Mr. Chair, if we were to combine both resolutions into one, we would be talking about a grand total of roughly seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars, give or take, which, which would give us the effect of five percent off the original told grand total.
I guess I would defer to our Am I hearing unofficial motion? Or are you just amusing?
Out loud.
Okay, thinking out loud.
Well, I these, these uh, uh, motions are basically the same. It, it does make sense to me to treat them together. I just don't know how we uh, use Robert's rule of order at this point to combine them. That's, you know, i- is there a way that we can uh, amend the agenda to consider them jointly?
Commissioner Fiani.
So I, I'll, I'll reiterate that uh, I would like to exercise Sheriff Murphy's uh, proposal bundling this with the towers. However, if the board were desirous of to a bundling these two resolutions together, I think the proper way to do it would be to vote on them independently. Then we would motion to amend the agenda to add a third resolution that would essentially combine them. And we would do that this evening with a great deal of patience, but both of them would have to be approved uh, independently from my perspective, so. But I, I still am in favor of uh, not approving them only for the purpose of exercising Sheriff Murphy's other option of bundling with the towers.
So you're suggesting if we all vote no on both of them, you're okay with Sheriff Murphy bundling?
With the tower project and the radio project and the other projects, yes.
Which would have to be handled in the future?
Yes.
I
Is that a motion? Or is it just thinking out loud?
Oh, it was, it was certainly not a motion. It was to answer Commissioner Helsman's question.
Yeah, I I, I specifically asked the last meeting, is this separate from the towers? And we said it was separate, and, and that was, that came into my thinking of how I voted last time. Uh, in, in my mind, they are separate issues, and they should be dealt with separately. Uh, we have a very good deal. Uh, there's no uh, no reason, in my mind, there's no reason to wait. I don't think we gain anything by waiting. You know, the way that prices change, uh, you know, I think we need to act tonight on this and keep them separate. In my mind, they're two separate, they're two, two separate items. Um, bundling them, I think we don't, I think if we take the towers separately, we can get a better deal on the towers than we can dealing with them together.
Thank you for that observation. Commissioner Gross.
Hey, Commissioner Chair, I would like to reiterate the comment I made earlier that if, if we truly are desirous of going into a bundled situation, we've already had conversation about going out with an RFI or an RFP on that project. Um, we, at this point, I, you know, we don't know the final number. We don't know where the money's going to come from to proceed with that. If we're going through an RFP process, we're not going to have this resolved in January. Uh, Cindy, what would you guess when we might get information back? So, so we're looking, we're looking at spring before we uh, can analyze and discuss and refine whatever we want to do with it combined or with the tower project. I don't think it's fair to the Sheriff's Department or nine-one-one to hold off on this that long. Granted, this is not imminent. We don't have to do it today, but I, I think it's risky to try and combine this with the, with the tower project.
Thank you for the comment or observation. In my reading of the procurement policy, we can vote to sidestep it. I'd like a a discussion of whether we should sidestep the procurement policy, because if we vote with the ink on paper now, they buy it tomorrow, and they spend the money. And that would be the same with uh, the next one. I'd like you to chime in, please.
I'm unclear as to which part of the procurement policy that you would sidestep.
It's over a hundred thousand dollars, so it'd have to go to fiscal services, uh, sealed bids, RFP or QBS, requisition purchase order contract required, authorization by Board of Commissioners.
Yes, but I, I also want to um, reiterate that these currently are fun, are um, slated to be paid for, for, by ARPA.
Correct.
And so with ARPA funds or federal dollars, it's grant dollars, and you still have to follow at least the federal guidelines, which is it ha, if it's over two hundred fifty thousand dollars, it has to be bid out. So that is a requirement. And then the only other thing um, I want to say before I go back is that these are two different departments. So if you were to approve the amount, the total amount in one, um, we would, that's what we would have for our budget amendment. That's what we would authorize for this first one. The second one would be whatever that, that amount is. So if you're trying to combine, combine them, if you combine them and it's a total amount, we're able to allocate those costs out. But if it's two separate amendments, that, that'll be more difficult for us.
Any questions?
So I, I have a question. So you're saying we need to have an RFP, and it needs to be bid out if it's over two hundred fifty thousand. This is obviously over two hundred fifty thousand. Isn't our discussion then a moot point?
Well, the resolution that originally came to you was a um, an amount that was competitively bid by the state. So it was competitively bid. It was part of the my deal. Cooperative, I guess, is what you would call it. So it was competitively bid, so it did meet those requirements. So I'm not clear on that. I haven't had that discussion. And if it's not, it would require to be. It would require it to go out for bid. If it's no longer part of that.
Contract. That is true.
Just to clarify then, so if we pass these separately this evening, we still have to have a competitive bid?
Uh, well, the the original that came to you was already competitively bid, so they were done by the state of Michigan. I'm not sure if that if the reduction that the um, that Motorola offered changes that. So that would be a clarification that we would have to do with Motorola. And if it does change it and it's no longer part of that competitive bid, we would be required to go out for bid, at least for the radio piece of it.
So so the likely but is that we will not issue any purchase orders until possibly next week at the earliest.
So Motorola Motorola made it very clear that the reason that they were able to do this again, because it was bundled and it was competitively bid, and that would be that would have been their original. If they looked at this as one project, number one, and number two, this pricing only goes through the end of the year. So if they don't have a PO by December thirty-first, they're not honoring this price.
Then the the second, the next question is, can we do this without ARPA funds? If we do it without ARPA funds, we are not and we can, we're, we would only sidestep our own policy as opposed to ARPA policy.
There are no grant dollars involved.
That that's what my question is. Can we do it without ARPA or grant?
I mean, it's always best practice to go out for for an RFP and and to follow our own policy. But if there are no grant dollars involved, that's not the requirement.
Thank you.
If Mr. Norfords is still on board, I guess the question I have now is does the competitive bid process through the State of Michigan agency take precedence over our procedure for getting an RFP? Or a bidding process?
I I don't think I'd say it takes precedence. I my my understanding is that it would satisfy your requirements.
That is correct. That is part of our policy, that a competitive bid.
Yes.
Yes.
So what once we have that in hand, which presumably we do, because this is the pricing Motorola gave us in compliance with state bid processes, we can just proceed. We don't have to worry about an additional RFP process.
If with the discount, it is still considered part of that competitive bid, then that is correct.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
I I want, uh, I would like to get clarification on this my deal and the state pricing. Um, so there if I understand things right, there's two two or three suppliers of these radios. So uh, with my deal, is it that um, all suppliers are going to charge the same price because it's a state set price? Or is there differences in price between the different radio manufacturers?
So so my deal is the state's procurement going out and doing competitive bids with various vendors. On this particular one, my assumption is going to be that this is with this particular vendor. Uh, they may have other competitive bids or other cooperatives that you can um uh, piggyback off of that are with other vendors, but this specific one would probably be with Motorola, most likely. So it's not just this. I mean, my deal goes out and um competitively bids on behalf of, you know, organizations on on every type of product that there is. So this is just one piece of that.
So if we accept this, I I I'm um, how is the pricing of Motorola on these radios compared to other manufacturers who have submitted my deal pricing? Do we know that?
I can't answer that.
Okay, I can speak to that just a little bit. I know that the I know for a fact that Kenwood's were a little bit cheaper, but I I think I mentioned the other day that the we we tested and evaluated some of those. And um, I gave the example of the deputy getting out of the patrol car, turning on the radio, going up and talking to the person, getting their license, registration, proof, insurance, and then about halfway back to the car, the radio actually affiliated with a tower and came on. So during that time, if he would have got out of his patrol car, started heading up to the car and and the person was not a cooperative citizen and either a fight was on or uh, they pulled the gun or whatever, my deputy would have been left out there without without radio communication. Um, I'm not going to save a thousand dollars a radio if that's the price, and I think it is about a grand. Um, I'm not going to do that. I'm just not going to. I'm not. I'm not buying that stuff. So.
But let me ask this question. So the state that Sheriff Murphy interpreting what you said, I I'm thinking the state of Michigan is approving with Kenwood uh, shoddy equipment, that unsafe equipment. I'm not sure I.
I think I can make. I think I could make that argument uh, pretty well. Now, when they put, just like when we do an RFP and when they do their contract pricing, they put out the parameters, right? And they say this radio has to have so many watts. It has to do this. It has to do that. It has to do that. And if the manufacturer says, yes, it'll do all that. Now, is that part of that um competitive bid? That it has to affiliate with a tower within, you know, a second or five seconds? I don't know what that is. I'm just telling you what our experience was.
I mean, and in general also, um, because the state of Michigan is so large and there's such an opportunity for folks to piggyback off of those cooperatives, they really do get a very good competitive price. So that is why um, a lot of people use my deal and piggyback off those.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comment, analysis, question? We will now vote on the amended resolution where the price drops from the six eighteen down to the five eighty-seven in two places. All those that and that I think this is a roll call.
Correct. This one is a roll call.
So this is a eleven H roll call, please.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
No.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Drick.
No.
Commissioner Deaton.
No.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Fiani?
No.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
We have four yeses, four no, one absent. Motion does not carry.
We're moving on then to eleven. I. It's a resolution approving the Distribution of American Rescue Plan Act. Point of order?
Failed, but we still need to vote on this resolution and as it stands.
The 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 amendment carried eight to one.
Yeah, the amendment was approved. So the lower amount was in the new amended resolution, and we voted on the amended.
Well, we we just voted on the amendment and it ended up four-four.
No, that your amendment was eight zip. We all agreed.
We passed the amendment.
We all agreed to lower the dollars the way you said. That was eight zip.
And and then, but then he then he rescinded his his. If he could, he rescinded his motion. But I don't know if that's possible.
Mr. Chair, point of order. It's kind of a moot point. I mean, the it the the whole thing failed, and so the wording of the amendment, whether it's as Commissioner Gross or remembers or as the rest of the board remembers, it's inconsequential.
It might not be if there was a request to reconsider, because that's part of our bylaws.
Okay.
So with the four four vote, that means that this particular resolution, for all pack purposes, is dead, correct?
Failed for tonight. Okay, we'll move on then. We're at eleven. I. It's a resolution approving the Distribution of American Rescue Plan Act funding to purchase an upgrade to nine-one-one central dispatch equipment brought to us by Central Dispatch. May I have a motion? Uh, move the resolution sample. Moved by sample. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? No second? That has failed to get the second. We're on to action item number twelve. It's entitled Finance and Asset Management Committee Recommendation. It's to discuss or vote on schedule the organizational meeting for Board of Commissioners to be held January eighth, twenty twenty-four. May I get? Well, action item, I'm guessing a vote. Let's start with a let's start with a, does anybody wish to move the matter?
So so moved second.
Moved by Nakagiri, seconded by Fiani. We're into discussion. Any discussion?
I am going to vote no on this. I'm um, upon more thinking, I am a first business day person. I don't think that I will amend to that effect, but I will be voting no for this for that reason.
Thank you. Any further comment? You good? Anybody else? Commissioner Gross.
Uh, I'm inclined to agree with my colleague, Commissioner Helserman. My big question about this is what happens for the rest of the calendar in January? You know, we, there was a proposal. There were three proposals for calendar for next year. And we got a separate memo from our being a county administrator that identified having a meeting on January eighth and or and or another meeting on January sixteenth and then having a super committee meeting on the twenty-second. Um, I think what we decide to do with respect to January eighth is going to trigger everything else. And I would like to have clarification on it, because I, for one, don't relish the idea of having three meetings on January twenty-second. Again, my two cents worth.
Thank you. Chair recognizes our acting county administrator.
Thank you. Um, at the organizational meeting, you will, excuse me, you will be voting on the meeting calendar as well. Um, there has been another draft based on the change of date. Um, the original one that I sent out was with the uh, organizational meeting on the sixteenth. With the change of the date on the eighth, the new draft calendar proposed with along that same structure has a has the General Government Committee meeting that following Monday. I'm sorry, the following Tuesday, because that Monday is a holiday. Um, and then it would have the personnel, the fam and what comes with fam. And SIPSED, um, the following week and then the full board. So there would be just the a meeting, 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 meeting. So there would not be a super meeting date like we had proposed. There would be, there's still four weeks. So there would be the organizational meeting, the typical first um, first Monday of the month, uh, board meeting with general government, and then the sec- the third Monday of that month would have uh, fam and SIPSED, and then there would be the full board meeting on the twenty-ninth.
What about personnel?
Uh, personnel is on the would be on the sixteenth.
We would have three meetings on the sixteenth.
No, on the sixteenth, that would be general government and personnel.
All personnel. Okay, so two would be one, two, two. You get a copy of that?
Uh, Natalie has that, so I will have her send that to you. Yes.
Any further comment, question? Commissioner Gross, you still have the floor?
Um, one additional question that gets us through January, I believe. Do we need to vote for the calendar for the rest of the year? Uh, I I know opinions were requested. Uh, I'm assuming we all responded to that. So I'm wondering of the three draft proposals, which one of those would be official?
That would be a vote at the organizational meeting. If the uh, January eighth resolution survives the vote we're going to have in a little bit. I don't want to cut you off. You said?
No, that's okay.
Okay. Further comment? Criticism, analysis. Commissioner Nakagiri.
I I move to amend um, January eighth to January second.
Support.
It's been moved by Commissioner Nakagiri, seconded by Commissioner Helserman that the January eight date in the agenda be amended to January two. Discussion, analysis, comment. Commissioner Sample.
Yeah, um, I don't have a problem with any date because I'm around, but it seems to me like January second was a highly uh, difficult date for multiple commissioners. So I I guess I'd like to know how many commissioners will be missing for January second. If that's what I'm going to be voting on.
That guy? That's one. That's a Did you approve? Get that approved by me?
I didn't. Renee did, though.
Oh, question answered. One.
Yep, one.
Any further analysis, comment, or objection to the amended and from eight to two? Commissioner Domas.
We did talk about this earlier, and uh, the reason there's even much of a discussion about this is that uh, this is a probably one of the most critical meetings or important meetings that we'll have all year. We do things at this meeting that no other meeting has the authority to deal with, and that is the election of the board chair, for one thing. And uh, uh, the reason that I suggested originally that we uh, select some other date is so that we would have all nine members of the of the board available to vote at that time. And what we vote on that day, uh, we will live with for the next twelve months. And uh, and there is, and all of the other items, uh, as far as invoices and and bills are uh, are already taken care of. Cindy, am I stepping over the line with that? But and that was taken into consideration when we recognize that there was going to be a a missing uh, committee commissioner here. So there's no reason. And in fact, I think if civil council will jump in here, if he still, we still have you met? I believe that some of their clients have that first meeting in in as far out as uh, February sometime. So there's no, there's no firm policy that you had that you would be violating if you didn't do the first Monday or the first Monday of the year. No.
Yeah. First business day.
First business.
Technicality.
So the eighth, the eighth works for everybody, as far as I understand.
Correct, and it seems like the second has one absence.
I don't think it's even a toss-up. I think the eighth is a good date to use.
In in my mind, we are there are nine of us. We, none of us connect independently. And the idea that that uh, we all agree on. we all agree on everything, you know, we obviously don't. And to express our opinion, that's what we're here for. And five, five of us carry the day. And then we get, we work together after we decide, make that decision. So I'm, I'm with any decision this full board makes. But I do reserve my ability to give my opinion and vote the way that I think is the best for this council.
We've always valued your opinion, Commissioner. So I don't want you to think otherwise. And one, one other thought, when it comes to one vote, you're looking at somebody that lost an election by one vote. So one vote means a lot. We all know that. Thank you. I'm through.
Thank you. And I'm sure would you do a roll call vote? Chair, madam, six clerk.
On the amendment, motion to amend from January 8th to January 2nd, moved by Commissioner Nakagiri, seconded by Commissioner Helserman. Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
No.
Commissioner Deaton.
No.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Fiani.
No.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
No.
And Commissioner Sample.
No. Thank you.
Motion to amend fails.
Does anybody wish any further comment or analysis, criticism or observations about the amended? Or back to our original, uh, resolution to hold the organizational meeting for the Board of Commissioners on January 8, 2024. Opportunity to talk, seeing none, I'll close that opportunity. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
No.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
And Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We now are on item 13 of our agenda this evening. Entitled Accounts Payable Reports. We have a sub A, which reads Claims Dated December 21, 2023. And also sub B, payables dated December 2 through December 17, 2023. May I get a motion to pay?
So move Gross.
I'm sorry.
Moved by Gross, seconded by Board Domas. Very good. All those in favor kindly say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, it's an eight to zero unanimous vote to pay 13A and B. We're to the item number 14, Call to the Public Number Two. This is where anyone in the public that would like to inform the board of items of importance are allowed to have two minutes to speak. Anybody in the room? Any cards?
I do not have any cards.
Anybody just want to raise their hand in the room? Because I just love this kind of stuff. Yes, you're soon to be replaced. Anybody on Zoom? We'll go to Zoom. Anybody on Zoom?
I do have, I do have one. It's Tim Bull.
Tim Bull, very good, sir. If you'd state your, we know your name, state your residential address and you have two minutes.
Uh, Tim Bull, Call Township, 66 Santa Rosa, uh, a member of the mostly silent public. I would just like to thank the board, uh, the county staff and the electeds that are there for your diligent work in trying to move the county forward. And to wish you all a happy holiday and a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday to you. Any further person on Zoom like to take advantage of the two-minute call to the public? Seeing none?
I have none, sir.
We've got it confirmed. The call to the public is now closed. We're at item number 15, Entitled Adjournment. May I get a motion?
So move, Helserman.
Support Deaton.
Moved by Helserman, support by Deaton. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we have an eight to zero unanimous adjournment as of 7:16.
Happy Christmas to all.
It's been a good run.